Most gracious Heavenly Father, we thank you because nothing is hidden from your eyes. You are the witness to all the conflict caused by misunderstanding and sometimes by ambitions of men. Whom you cast to lead us? May our leaders unite in the righteous governance in the City of Manila. We trust you, our loving God, with sure success. This we pray in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Panunumpas sa watawat ng Pilipinas. Ako ay Pilipino. Buong, buong katapatang nanunumpa sa watawat ng Pilipinas at sa bansang kanyang sinasagisag na may dangal, katarungan, at kalayaan na pinakikilos ng sambayan ang makadios, makatao, makakalikasan, at makabansa.
Mr. Secretary, roll completion.
Under First District, Honorable Alfonso Huzon, Honorable Janicio, Honorable Fajardo, Honorable Liam Moises, Honorable Nueva, and Honorable Ong. Under Second District, Honorable Benaventura Kimpo, Honorable Laxson, Honorable Liam Numero, Honorable Robles Dalus, Honorable Sia, and Honorable Don Edward. Under Third District, Honorable Ali Barbar, Honorable Chua Jowell, Honorable Fugoso Pascual, Honorable Isip Ernesto Jr., Honorable Nieto Rodriguez. Under Fourth District, Honorable Bahani, Honorable Bagat Sing, Honorable Chua Luisito, Honorable Quintos, Honorable Reyes, and Honorable Villanueva. Under Fifth District, Honorable Bornejo, Honorable Hezon, Honorable Isip Ricardo Jr., Honorable Ortega, Honorable Tieng, and Honorable Yupancor. Under Sixth District, Honorable Abante Barquia, Honorable Castaneda, Honorable Lacuna Salvador Philip, Honorable Uy, and Honorable Veloso. Honorable Par. Ex-official members, Honorable Lacuna Leyla Ni Marie, and Honorable Don Daniel Dave.
Mr. Secretary, do you have a call?
Your Honor, as of 10:48 in the morning, there are only 15 members present for this regular session.
Honorable Familia Fugoso Pascual, please inform all the councilors to immediately proceed at the session hall since there's no quorum receipts, secretary. Social motion, Mr. Nasa Patrabi.
Your Honor, with the arrival of Honorable Don Edward, Honorable Nieto Rodriguez, Honorable Bahani, Honorable Yupancor, and Honorable Castaneda, as of 10:56 in the morning, there are already 20 members present for this regular session.
Mr. La Corte, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We are now on item number seven, the business for the day. May I request the secretary to please read item number one for first reading.
Nasa Patrabi.
Item number one under first reading is draft ordinance number 8071, an ordinance authorizing the city mayor to cause the acquisition either by negotiation, expropriation, or any other legal means of that certain parcel of land consisting of 3,302.2 square meters, more or less, situated in Florentino Torres Street, Balangay 754, Zone 81, Santa Ana, District 5, Manila, embraced under TCT number 0022019003300 for the benefit of the inhabitants thereof and thereby appropriating necessary funds therefore as per basic papers authored by Honorable Isip Ricardo Jr.
Your Honor, I move that we refer item number one to the Committee on Housing, Land, Urban Planning Development, and Resettlement as the principal committee, Your Honor, and to the Committee on Appropriations.
There's a motion to refer item number one to the Committee on Housing, Land, Urban Planning, Development, and Resettlement as the lead committee and the Committee on Appropriations. There being objection, motion is approved.
Item number two is draft ordinance number 8072, an ordinance further amending Section 2A of Ordinance Number 7755 under Tricycle Terminals as amended by including therein the loading and loading of Robinson, P. Faure, Maria Oroza, Tricycle Operators and Drivers Association, or RFM TODA, and Section 2 of Ordinance Number 7871 as amended by including therein its route measure capacity as per basic papers authored by Honorable Hezon.
Your Honor, I move that we refer item number two to the Committee on Transportation.
There's a motion to refer item number two to the Committee on Transportation. There being objection, motion is approved.
Item number three is draft resolution number 6505, a resolution granting the accreditation of San Antonio Community Neighborhood Association, Inc., of Balangay 754, Zone 81, District 5, People's Organization as per basic papers authored by Honorable Isip Ricardo Jr. and Honorable Hezon.
Your Honor, I move that we refer item number three to the Committee on Cooperatives, NGOs, and POs.
There's a motion to refer item number three to the Committee on Cooperatives, NGOs, and POs. There being objection, motion is approved.
Item number four is draft resolution number 6506, resolution granting the application of Pampanga Pedicab Operators and Drivers Association, PAPODA, Inc., to become accredited as non-government organization of Manila as per basic papers authored by Honorable Ali Barbar.
Your Honor, I move that we refer item number four to the Committee on Cooperatives, NGOs, and POs.
There's a motion to refer item number four to the Committee on Cooperatives, NGOs, and POs. There being objection, motion is approved.
Item number five, a letter of Mr. Ernesto Es Ginto, President G. Araneta, Dynasty TODA, Inc., requesting for accreditation as non-government organization NGO as per basic papers.
My honorable members, former councilors, to please, when you are sponsoring a resolution or an ordinance, even for first reading, we are encouraging you to please attend the session. When you have attending resolution or ordinance for first reading, second reading, or third reading, to show respect to our institution, since you are the primary author, we would assume that you will be the person primarily interested in attending the session, in explaining your proposed legislation, as well as defending your proposed legislation for the information of the honorable councilors. Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Your Honor, I move that we refer item number five to the Committee on Cooperatives, NGOs, and POs.
There's a motion for item number five to the Committee on Cooperatives, NGOs, and POs. There being objection, motion is approved.
Item number six, a letter of Ms. Joseline J. Quintos, Officer in Charge, City Personal Office, Manila, requesting concurrence of the signed appointment of Dr. Francis Chua as member of the Board of Regents of the Universidad de Manila as per basic papers.
Your Honor, I move that we discuss item number six after we have referred all other items to their respective committees for first reading. Your Honor, may we continue item number seven?
Mr. Secretary.
Item number seven, a letter of Dr. Theodoro E. Martin, MDFPPS, Officer in Charge, Hospital Director, God Andres Bonifacio Memorial Medical Center, Manila, requesting adoption of a resolution or ordinance authorizing the creation or establishment of a blood bank section in the said hospital as per basic papers.
Your Honor, I move that we refer item number seven to the Committee on Health.
There's a motion to refer item number seven to the Committee on Health. There being objection, motion is approved.
Item number eight, a letter of Punong Barangay Margarita Mendoza Clemente of Balangay 667, Zone 72, District 5, Manila, relative to her request for the reopening of the case boundary dispute with Balangay 670, Zone 72, District 5, Manila for appropriate action as per basic papers.
Your Honor, I move that we refer item number eight to the Committee on Balangay Affairs as the lead committee and to the Committee on Laws.
There's a motion to refer item number eight to the Committee on Balangay Affairs as the lead committee and the Committee on Laws. There being objection, motion is approved.
Item number nine, a letter of Attorney Pilarita T. Lapitan, Assistant Ombudsman, proper, relative to a complaint of Ms. Rosendaan M. Ocampo of 2818 Lamayan Street, Santa Ana, Manila, against Punong Barangay Marietta Villanueva of Balangay 862, Zone 94, District 6, Manila for appropriate action as per basic papers.
Your Honor, I move that we refer item number nine to the Committee on Balangay Affairs.
There's a motion to refer item number nine to the Committee on Balangay Affairs. There being objection, motion is approved. Yes, Your Honor, Jowell Villanueva. What is your number, secretary?
Your Honor, narinig ko po kanina 'yung binanggit ninyo regarding sa first reading at nagkataong wala po 'yung principal sponsor for the enlightenment of each and every one of us and for the information rin ho, especially 'yung mga nandidito. Ano ho ba talaga ang dapat kapag 'yung agenda o 'yung item ay naka-agenda, for example, and yet 'yung principal sponsor ay hindi po present dito sa session, ano ho bang dapat gawin ng konsero?
By tradition, Honorable Jowell Villanueva, ang ginagawa po natin pag wala po 'yung author sa session o hindi po siya present, usually deferrate po natin ang item na yun hanggang tumating po siya. Kaya nga po, pinakiusapan po natin, makasama po nating mga konsihal na sana po pag meron po kayong item or proposed resolution or ordinance, lalong-lalo na po pag ito po 'yung on the floor or for second or third reading, minubukahi po namin na kayo po'y umatend. Dahil syempre, ang presumption po, kayo po ang pinaka-interesado na ito po'y maisabatas dahil kayo po 'yung gumawa lumikha ng nasabing resolution o ordinance.
So, Your Honor, ibig ho bang sabihin dahil sa inyong warning na binanggit eh sa mga susunod na session natin, sakaling wala po 'yung principal sponsor ng nagpanukala ng isang resolution at ordinance sa, ay sisimulan na po natin ang pagdeferrate nito until such time na pumasok po 'yung principal author, Your Honor.
Yes, Your Honor. That would be all, Your Honor. Thank you. Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
One minute, Mr. Secretary, Your Honor.
Research secretary, secretary.
Your Honor, the request for the concurrence of the signed appointment of Dr. Francis Chua as member of the Board of Regents of the Universidad de Manila, but apparently the Dr. Francis Chua is not yet present in this August chamber, and therefore, Your Honor, I move that we defer this temporarily or... Ah? Until the presence of... until Dr. Francis Chua arrive. I was informed that he is on his way.
Yes, there's a motion to defer item number six until Dr...
Arrival.
Until the arrival of Dr. Francis Chua, whose appointment as member of the Board of Regents of the Universidad de Manila is a part of the agenda under item number six. Honorable Wardy Quintos, Secretary of Justice.
Thank you, Your Honor. May I request the Majority Floor Leader to first touch item number 10?
Thank you, Honorable Wardy Quintos, for your manifestation. Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Your Honor, actually, we are about to tackle item number 10 for second reading. The proposed ordinance for the amending Section 2A of Ordinance Number 7755, Tricycle Terminals as amended by including therein the loading and unloading areas of Loretto Sampalok Tricycle Operators and Drivers Association, LORTODA, Inc., the Section 2 of Ordinance Number 7871 as amended by including therein its route measure capacity. Your Honor, the Committee on Transportation had submitted its report, and therefore, may I request the secretary to please read the report of the Committee on Transportation.
Mr. Secretary.
The proposed draft ordinance seeks to provide a decent means of livelihood to tricycle drivers and operators as well as augment public transport system within the specified area of coverage. It is of public knowledge that the proponents of this measure belong to the marginalized and underprivileged sectors of society located in depressed areas, and to somehow uplift their standard of living, the instant measure is sponsored by the principal author. Necessarily, income derived... author. Necessarily, income derived there from will greatly augment and address daily family expenses insofar as basic needs are concerned, so long as the instant measure strictly adheres to and not violates its route measure capacity as to the number of authorized units supplying the said route, as well as faithfully observe and comply with traffic laws, rules, and regulations. This committee interposes no objection thereto and hereby recommends its adoption for second reading and approval in simultaneous publication.
Please, Secretary of Justice.
If my memory serves me right, it seems to be 50. Now, it is best if we reduce to 35 or 35 units. Most often than not, because of this RMC, it is the one that is being abused by the officials of the TODA. Here, I will start from the beginning. First, what I have heard is the color room, since there are available units that are not available outside of 35 units in the ordinance. Wait a minute. Can I explain, Your Honor? You seem to be tired.
Honorable Quintos, because this ordinance has not been open for discussion in the debate, I thought we were just going to make a simple manifestation or simple motion with respect to this.
Okay, I will abbreviate, Your Honor. I thought I was supposed to give my sponsorship speech.
Please.
Okay, thank you. No matter where, regardless of, they pay entry fees for the color room or the TODA that are not comparable to other places, they can accommodate them. So, you know, the point of this is, if we limit it, now, Your Honor, I just want to say for the record that the council members here in the four districts, if I compare the members, I will become co-principal authors. Si Consejal DJ Bagatting, Consejal Chris Bacani, Consejal Science Reyes, Consejal Joel JT Bilanueva, and Consejal Louis Chua. Your Honor, I will submit to the soon-to-be manifestation, soon-to-be-made manifestation of the Majority Floor Leader inasmuch as there are some matters that need rectification in this ordinance, Your Honor, for each department.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Wadi Quintos. Please bear in mind the repercussions to also include the names of the other councilors as you have manifested as principal authors in this draft ordinance. Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Your Honor, I am excited for the principal author. In fact, I did not even call him. He has come to talk. Due to his excitement, Your Honor, I move to defer item number 10.
There is a motion to defer item number 10. There being objection, motion is approved. Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Your Honor, we will now proceed to item number 11, the proposed ordinance providing monetary end of service reward to qualified daycare centers in the city of Manila appropriating funds thereof and for other purposes. Your Honor, the Committee on Appropriation had submitted its report, and therefore, may I request the Secretary to please read the report of the Committee on Appropriations.
Mr. Secretary.
Report from the Committee on Appropriations. After due deliberation and perusal of the necessary documents, this committee finds the draft ordinance number 7985 meritorious and hereby interposes no objection or opposition for its approval. Therefore, this committee recommends that the same be submitted for second reading to be further discussed on the floor by the City Council. Draft ordinance number 7985 shall provide a well-deserved end of service reward to qualified early child development workers who devote their skills and time for the early education of the children of Manila. As discussed during the committee hearing, certain amendments have been introduced to improve draft ordinance number 7985. Attached to this committee report is the amended version of the subject ordinance. It is understood that funds released for the above purpose shall be subject to the budgeting, accounting, and auditing laws, rules, and regulations.
Your Honor, may I also request the Secretary to please read the report of the Committee on Social Welfare.
Mr. Secretary.
Report from the Committee on Social Welfare. The proposed ordinance number 7985 entitled the ordinance providing monetary and service reward to qualified daycare teachers in the city of Manila appropriating funds thereof and for other purposes is a very appropriate and timely proposition that certainly gives recognition for the valuable teaching, training, and works of our daycare teachers on early child development training to the children of the city of Manila. The Committee on Social Welfare acknowledges the valuable work and contribution of daycare teachers or child development workers for their commitment to love, care, guidance, and most times actuate as parents to these children on values education and formation prior to enter regular school. Despite the minimal compensation we receive from the city government, they continue to perform their utmost and serve as educators to these children, and it is right and about time that we give recognition for their services by way of legislation, providing monetary end of service reward to our daycare teachers or child development workers. In conclusion, the Committee on Social Welfare hereby highly recommends and interposes no objection in the proposed ordinance providing monetary end of service reward to qualified daycare teachers in the city of Manila.
Your Honor, before we open the period of discussion and debate, may I request the principal author, Honorable Priscilla Marie Abante Barquilla, to be recognized by the chair.
Honorable Princess Abante Barquilla, Secretary of Justice.
Good morning to you all. Thank you very much, the Presiding Officer and Majority Leader, for this decision. This is the ordinance that provides an end of service reward for our daycare teachers. It is one of the prominent points that our mayor brought up at the beginning of the local school board. We know that in all districts of Manila, how important is the salary for our daycare teachers. In fact, it is not a salary. It is an honorarium because actually they are just under the job order items under the city government plantilla or network. More than that, there is no salary. There are no benefits, which includes no retirement benefits and all others that we believe they are entitled to. They are the carers of our children before they even enter elementary. They are the ones that teach our children the basic knowledge before they go to school. And even more, they perform functions beyond their job descriptions. They are called daycare teachers, but also when there is a crisis in our district, the first ones to bring to the daycare teachers to assist. They also help with checking on the needs of families. Their work is not only for students, daycare halls, but also for concerns of the families. Also, there is the need for no daycare halls in the district, but still they continue to love and help us in our youth, especially in our district. As the mayor said, why don't we find a way to help them? When they finish their work, they will come back to their families. This is because of our longtime county manager, who is now the head of Manila Department of Social Welfare, County Manager Refugoso, that maybe we can do the ordinance. And because there, I came to draft this end of service reward ordinance. When they finish their work, when they meet the criteria that they set, they will get a lump sum that is not a retirement benefit, but a small amount that can be appreciated for the work that they do in our district and for our youth. And I hope that from here, we will more contribute to the benefits that they deserve. So, I support your support for this, to give our thanks to our daycare teachers who still helped and supported and loved us in our youth and in our district. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable Priscilla Marie Abante Barquilla. Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Your Honor, as one of the principal authors, Your Honor, may I also be recognized to give my opening statement?
Yes, Honorable Joe Will, Secretary of Justice.
At present, Your Honor, we have 428 daycare teachers. Actually, our daycare center is very lucky. The director of social welfare is the county manager. So, he knows that the director is in daycare, in the community. The one who was here was County Manager Refugoso. Originally, what County Manager Refugoso and the council members wanted is to become permanent, the daycare teachers, daycare workers. But unfortunately, due to our situation in PS, we are lagging behind the 45% threshold for personal services. There are employees of the government that we cannot do permanently. So, it is possible that the other workers are 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, 30 years, and yet, they are not permanent. Actually, in the past, they were given a lower priority if they really did this. But due to the problem of the administration, the 45% threshold, we cannot solve it. In fact, even the mayor and vice mayor, Hanila Kuna, they also wanted to become permanent daycare teachers. Because the vice mayor was in social welfare. He became director of social welfare, and he knows how important the work and sacrifice of the daycare worker and daycare teacher is. So, in this ordinance, we have seen that it is possible that we do not have to suffer their sacrifice. And to be honest, it is very important for the sacrifice that they did for our district, for our people. But at least, no matter how, they feel that they are worthy and they are grateful to the local administration. So, I support the co-principal author, County Manager Priscilla Marie Abante Barquilla, that I hope you can help us to pass this. That in this case, we will give recognition to the daycare workers or daycare teachers that are working and giving their needs and lives for our children that we are struggling with.
With that, Your Honor, I move to open the period of discussion and debate.
There is a motion to open the period of discussion and debate. There being objection, motion is approved. You have done a great work in this ordinance, Honorable Princess Marie Abante Barquilla and our Majority Floor Leader, Honorable Joe Will Chua. We know that our daycare teachers are a big sacrifice that we give to our district of Manila. A big and difficult work of their work. Not only for educating our daycare students, but also for assisting MDSWD in the crisis. So, their work is huge. They spend a lot of time searching for it, but their salary is very low. So, this ordinance is very good. Honorable Joe Will Villanueva, Secretary of Justice.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. First of all, I would like to say thank you and I commend the principal authors of this very good ordinance. It is correct that you mentioned. This is a testimony of the district of Manila, of our Yorme Isco Moreno, Vice Mayor Hanila Kuna, that almost all of the sectors are grateful. Not only the senior citizens, but... Hindi lang ho 'yung mga senior citizens, BWDs, mga estudyante, mga kapulisan, mga guro, pati mga daycare centers eh nasasagap ng radar ng ating mga pinuno upang maramdaman nila na sila'y kinakalinga. Gusto ko lang hong samantalay ng pagkakataon na ito upang maiwasan po ang agam-agam sa mga darating na panahon sa kahaling maipasan na po ito. At 'yung mga gustong magtanong, eh dito po sana eh maliwawanan nating mabuti. Eh gusto ko lang hong tanungin sa mga principal authors natin, particularly dito po sa Section 4, some monetary end of service or reward. Some monetary end of service reward shall be given to the following. Number one, 30,000 pesos to daycare teachers that have reached 60 years old and are not qualified to continue employment as daycare teachers in the city of Manila, provided that said daycare teachers have rendered at least 10 years of service as daycare teacher in the city of Manila. My first question is, kapag ang isang daycare teacher po ay 60 years old na, pero siya ay nag-retiro ng kanyang service ay nine years lang o kulang-kulang sampung taon, ibig sabihin ho ba'y hindi siya makakatanggap nitong 30,000 pesos?
Honorable Joel Chua.
Ito pong requirement dito eh end. Kaya nga sinabi po provided eh. So ibig sabihin, pag 60 years old ka, eh kailangan at least 10 years 'yung serbisyo po na na-Google mo. So pagka nine years and six months, hindi ka po pasok dito.
Pangalaw, ah maliwanag po yun. Ito po'y para lang ho may itala sa ating records, no? Sakali magkaroon ng mga katanungan sa mga mag-aapply nito eh maliwanag na tinatalak at sinasagot ng mga principal authors natin ang mga katanungan ito. Pangalawa po, babaliktarin ko rin lang po, no? Just for record purposes, 10 years or more naman siya nag-serbisyo, pero ang edad niya ay 59 years old and 11 months, hindi pa rin ho siya qualified dito?
Honorable... Honorable Princess Abante Barquilla is recognized.
Ah, under po sa provision ng Section 4, hindi po siya papasok dun sa letter A, pero kung umabot po siya ng 15 years minimum, kahit wala pa siyang 60 years old, ay pwede na po siyang makatanggap ng 50,000 under letter B. So dalawang klase po 'yung qualification na pwede, kasi marami po tayong mga nagiging hindi na-qualified, kasi alam natin pag JO, merong age requirement siya, no? So pag hindi na siya pinapayagan magpatuloy ng serbisyo dahil because of age, pero pasok siya dun sa 10 years, eh pwede niya ng kunin 'yung kanyang end of service reward. Marami naman po dyan na simula pagkalabas pa lang ng college or pagkalabas pa lang ng kanilang pag-aaral ay dumiretsyo kaagad sa daycare service, wala pa po sila 60 years old, pero mabata sila ng 15 and above, pwede na po sila for the 50,000 pesos end of service reward. Kasama po sa title 'yung end of service, no? Ibig sabihin, magtatapos sa kanilang serbisyo after nila makatanggap nitong reward na ito. So if they do not want to, if they still want to continue with their service, pwede naman hindi nila kunin ito.
Just for clarification po, saan po magre-recon 'yung end of service? Sa araw ng graduation o moving up ceremony ng mga estudyante? Or 'yung school year ba ang ide-determina para masabing dun magtatapos 'yung end of service 'yung daycare teacher?
Honorable Joel Chua.
Actually, 'yung mga daycare teacher po natin, naka-JO yan eh. So ang kontrata po niyan, six months, six months, six months. So dun po magtatapos po 'yan, pag natapos po 'yung six months. Pero alam po ninyo, nakakalungkot nga dahil JO lang sila, 7,000 lang. Buti nga nadagdagang po ngayon ng 2,000, so 9,000 na po sila ngayon. Pero kung tutusin, at kung iisipin po natin, talagang hindi naman enough itong sweldo nila. Kaya talagang we are moving heaven and earth para siyempre madagdagang pa puto. So hopefully, pag naayos na po natin itong problema natin sa 45%, soon eh sila na 'yung mga susunod at magiging priority po ng siyudad ng Maynila.
May katanungan lang po ako kay Honorable Abante Barquilla. Bakit po natin iindicate ang 60 years old at hindi po some other age like 65 or 70?
Sa pagkakaalala ko noong dina-draft po ito, yun 'yung parang karamihan na nagtatapos ng service nila. Or I think sa qualifications, minsan hindi na tinatanggap pag more than 60 years old pag job order?
Pag job order? Hindi tinatanggap pag more than 60 years old?
Ang alam ko po.
Hindi po bang job order ay hindi po kasama sa Civil Service Rules and Regulation? Dahil ito po'y isang contractual agreement sa kapag ang job order ng Civil Service Rules and Regulations?
Well, under pa rin siya ng Civil Service Rules and Regulation, pero wala siyang benefits, wala siyang employer-employee relationship, but still under CSC because it's under the government network, diba? So I, from what I recall, kaya po naglagay ng age requirement. Yun 'yung parang karamihan po ng mga daycare natin, hindi sila na pinapagpatuloy after 60 years old. Yun 'yung naging concern po ng iniin Kuncihala re noon, na marami ng hinanid discontinue sa kanila 'yung contract because of the age.
Okay, at isa na lang pong katanungan, before I recognize again, Honorable Joel Villanueva, pag ang isang daycare teacher po ay nag-render na at least 15 years, pero hindi pa po siya nag-end of service, pwede niya na po ba kunin 'yung reward? O kailangan niya po maghintay na mag-end of service siya bago niya po makuha itong benefit nitong nasabing ordinance?
Una ulat, me-correct myself, tama nga ata kayo, pero hindi nga ata ang Civil Service under a job order, COBA rules lang talaga siya. That's just the same, I think there are, depending on the agency on how they interpret on sino lang 'yung allowable or tinatanggap. Siguro the Majority Leader can clarify further. Number two, on the second qualification for the 50,000, 15 years of service, even if wala sila 60 years old, they can elect to receive the end of service. Pero as the title connotes, it ends their service as the daycare teacher.
So pag ang daycare teacher po, for example, 40 years old nagsimula na maging daycare teacher, 55 years old na po, 55 years old na po siya nag-render na po siyang 15 years, qualified na po siya dito sa ordinance na ito, at pwede niya na po kunin 'yung 50,000? Para makuha niya po 'yung 50,000, kailangan po mag-end of service siya?
Mali, after ng contract niya, kasi nga contractual sila po, diba? Six months, six months. Pag natapos na po yun, pag kinuha niya na 'yung 50 end of service, hindi na siya ire-renew with a job order under the daycare system?
Hindi na siya ire-renew dahil kinuha niya na 'yung 50,000, tama?
Parang ganun po essentially 'yung...
So hindi po pwede dahil siya ay qualified dito, nag-render siya na 15 years, hindi niya na po pwede ipagpatuloy 'yung pag-serbisyo niya bilang daycare teacher?
Naalala ko po noong sa committee hearing, yun po 'yung naging discussion on the end of service. Kaya po siya may coin na end of service. Otherwise, ano lang siya, merit reward lang dapat siya. Pero because nakalagay na end of service, it essentially, ang objective ng reward is a retirement benefit ng daycare teacher. So after that...
So in other words, ang daycare teacher po ay kailangan po siya na ipagpatuloy niya po 'yung kanyang service...
Ie-elect niya.
He or she has to elect to continue the service and then upon his retirement or upon determination of his service, siya kanya lang po makukain 50,000, tama po?
Yes po. Kasi meron namang po kasi iba na, ah tawag dito, more than 15 years na sila, wala pa sila 60 years old, pwede kasi sila nulupat ng ibang trabaho, pero wala sila nakukuha, they have nothing in return dun sa 15 years na ginugol nila. So at least meron sila makukuha ang 50,000 after that. If they want to continue 15, 16, 17 years, automatic, meron na silang 50,000 pag natapos nila when if they reach a 60 years old. Whereas kung 60 ka lang, 10 years lang na ano mo, na trabaho mo, 30,000 lang. This is the minimum amount that we can give now na hindi naman maoverwhelm ang ating budget.
Okay, one last question. Ito pong drop ordinance, is this retroactive?
Ah, yun po 'yung siguro mas according, wala po kaming retroactive clause dito sa ano, sa ordinance itself. Kaya hindi po siya magiging retroactive.
So ibig sabihin po, 'yung mga existing daycare teachers lang po natin who have not elected to retire at the age of 60 years old or who have not yet rendered at least 10 or 15 years, whichever is the case, is the beneficial of this ordinance?
Yes.
'Yung mga nakaraan po, hindi na po sila qualified, tama po?
Tama po.
One minute, Trice, your honor.
Trice is declared by the Chair.
Good discussion, your honor. I've noticed na itong Section 4A, tatlo ang requirement. Number one, kailangan 60 years old ka. Number two, kailangan not qualified ka to continue employment. At number three, kailangan 10 years of service ka. I propose, your honor, na mamaya during the period of amendment and of course, if my co-principal author will allow, to delete are not qualified to continue employment. So gawin na lang po natin na dalawa lang 'yung requirement, which is 60 years old plus 10 years of service. So tingin ko enough na po yun para mabigyan po natin sila ng award, huwag na po natin masyadong pahirapan.
So, Honorable Joel Chua, ang minumukha niya po ba itong drop ordinance number 7985 ay instead po na gawin end of service award, gawin po siyang longevity pay award? Tama po?
Tama po.
So para po sa kalaman ng ating mga kasamahan sa konceho, minumukha hi po ng dalawang principal author na ito pong drop ordinance 791, 7985, ay instead po na maging end of service award, ay magiging longevity pay award. Kung saan po ang ating mga daycare teachers, regardless kung sila po ay hindi na kunin 'yung kalan JO o lumabas po na 60 years old, so long as sila po ay nag-render ng service for 15 years or at least has reached 6 years old and has rendered at least 10 years of service, hindi po kailangan i-terminate ang kanilang employment o mag-end ang kanilang employment, qualified po sila sa longevity award. Honorable Joel Villanueva is recognized.
Thank you. Hello. Thank you, Mr. President. Gusto ko lang hong linawin, baka ho pwede kong imungkahi sa mga principal authors na during the time na mag-i-resign na po, let's say, ang senaryo po'y ganito eh, 60 years old ho siya at the end of his term as JO, pero before mag-end 'yung kanyang kontrata bilang JO, may nangyaring hindi maganda. Sabihin na po natin, namatay po 'yung daycare teacher o kaya eh nagkaroon ng accidente which renders him or her physically incapable of continuing 'yung pagiging daycare teacher niya. Baka ho magkaroon tayo ng exemption na kahit hindi naabot 'yung edad na yun o 'yung years of service na yun, pero nagkaroon in case of death or physical incapacity on the part of the daycare teacher in line of duty, o kaya during the continuation of his contract as JO, baka pwede nating mabigyan pa rin ng pansinin at maging qualified pa rin siya na makatanggap nun. Kasi ho, hindi ho natin masabi talaga ang panahon. Nakita natin 'yung nangyari kay Kobe Bryant, kay Father Suarez, na walang makapagsasabi na mangyayari isang bagay na yun. Para ho maibsan 'yung kalooban ng mga kamag-anak na nag, sa kanilang kamag-anak na nawala na nag-dedicate ng long years of service as daycare teacher, then suddenly, one month or less than one month eh may nangyari. At dahil by law, technically, hindi sila qualified, baka ho 'yung mga ganung sitwasyon eh pwede nating iconsider, your honor.
Honorable Joel Chua.
Thank you. Your honor, tingin ko 'yung gusto pong mangyari ni Consell JTB, insurance na po 'yan eh. 'Yung kunyari, one month or two months eh matatapos na at bigla may nangyari sa kanila, eh dapat mag-qualified sila, pumasok sila sa 15 years. So let's say, matatapos na po sila, tapos eh naka-15 years na sila. Kasi sabi ko nga po sa inyo, kontrata 'yan eh, diba? Six months. Oh, di normali, hindi naman eksakto 'yan eh, diba? Hindi naman talaga eksakto 'yan eh. Minsan 15 years and six months, o 16 years, diba? So di, mangaka-bail ka rin dahil naano mo na 'yung 15 years of service mo eh. 'Yung gusto lang po natin dito eh parang ma-reward pa po sila, para magamit po nila 'yung tinatawag na reward na ibibigay po natin. Pero po, actually, meron po akong, meron pong isang gusto po si Mayor naipasa para namasay insurance ng manilenyo, siguro dun baka po pwede natin sila maipaso.
And just to add to the point of Honorable Joel Chua, siguro po hindi po tayo mapipigilan ng kahit sino man, Honorable Villanueva, na kung sakali po, nangyari po 'yung exceptional circumstances na nabanggit niyo po sa isa po, isa po nating mga minamahal na daycare teachers, pwede po tayo mag-file ng separate ordinance para po in honor of that daycare teachers at mag-appropriate ng specific fund para po dun sa nasabing event na po yun.
On the line of their service?
Yes, in the line of their service. Honorable Villanueva is recognized.
One last question, your honor. Ito pa sa Section 5, appropriation, the city government shall appropriate funds therefore which shall be used for above purposes mandated by this order. mandated by this ordinance in the city's annual budget and in every succeeding budget year thereafter ibig sabihin ho ba dahil asado na ang ating twenty twenty budget hindi ito nakapaloob ngayon sa ating annual budget kung meron mang mag-qualify dito sa mga nakalagay dito sa section four and section two hindi ho nila pwede ito iclaim dahil wala pa pong appropriation
Honorable Joel Chua
Kung ito po napasa na po natin once na nagkaroon po nagkaroon po tayo ng windfall magkakaroon po tayo ng supplemental budget so dun po sa supplemental budget ikakarga na po natin 'yung mga ordinancea na naipasa ngayong city council but in the meantime hangga't hindi pa po natin naipapasa wala pa po tayong paglalagapan
Thank you honorable Joel Bilanueva Honorable Benabitura Kimpo is recognized
Thank you po ah bilang po in behalf po ng ah district two daycare teacher kasi ako parang nanay na po nila ako ah salamat po sa mga nag-author nito at alam ko po na hindi pa babayaan ng mga konceho na katulad ko po at nagpapasalamat po kami una sa lahat sa ating mahal na mayor mayor Iscom Moreno at ating vice mayor Hanila Kuna sa kanilang pagmamahal po sa mga daycare teacher na alam ko namam po na parati po itong naghihirap sa lahat ng sakuna na dumadating sa atin sunog bagyo nandyan po sila para tumulong sa sa siyudad natin so nagpapasalamat po kami ng buong puso sa aming distrito sa ginawan niyo nito alam ko po na may mga iti sa labi nila pag nalaman po nila ito salamat po
Thank you honorable ah Jen Benabitura Kimpo honorable world beginning is recognized
Marami salamat po your honor I stand in full support of this measure your honor at ah alam niyo even beyond the call of duty of teaching at ah despite their meager income monthly three five lang yata isang buwan to eh mga daycare teachers na to eh nandyan sila sa mga bata oh kasi yun namam pinakamatibay na pundasyon in growing up 'yung mga tinuturuan na sa daycare na yan bago sila pumasok sa big school na lagi ko sinasabi yan kapag ako'y naimbitahan alam niyo your honor ang tanong ko lang ho rito just for the record assuming nag ah qualify 'yung mga applicants saan ho sila magfile ng claim anong tanggapan or implementing office ang in charge to process their claims pangalawa dalawang bagay lang ho pangalawa ito ho ba lam sum hindi ba installment or target basis yun lang ho maraming salamat po
Honorable
Dun po sa unang katanong ang po ah siguro sa social welfare yun po 'yung ah tamang ah ahensya ng ating pamahalaan na nangangalaga po ng mga daycare so dun po yun po 'yung tama I think after this ah the ah social welfare will pass an I R R or implementing rules and regulation which will be submitted to the city council for us to ratify and approve
Honorable Lou Beloso is recognized
Thank you your honor ah ito po'y napakagandang ah ah ordinancea at ah talagang tinitignan ah sa tingin ko po ay tinitignan ang ating ah ah unong lunso kasama ng ating ah vice mayor at ah napakagaling po ng ah ah pagkakagawa ng ating ah butihing ah Consel Joel Chua at ah ah Consel Consiala Priscilla Maria Abante Marquia ah sapagtingin nila sa sa ating mga maliit namang gagawa sa sa mga barangayan um ang mga daycare teacher ay tumatay 'yung pangalawang mga magulang at ah napakahirap talagang napakahirap lalo na ang aalagaan mo ay itong mga mga toddlers na ito na talagang makukulit mas makukulit pa dun sa mga binatilyo ah napakahirap ng trabaho so ah hinihiling ko nga hinihiling ko lang po sa mga may akda na isama ang mga pangalan ng mga dating man minority minority na sa sa ordinasang ito at ah ito po'y talagang ah natatandaan ko 'yung isang nadilig ko sa radyo na ang pagawa ng mabuti ay hindi magbubunga ng masama so sa Maynila ang pagawa ng mabuti ay binibigyan ng pagpapala binibigyan ng rewards tama na 'yung ah masasama na siya ang namumuno o nagkakaroon ng benepisyo nagkakalam ng nagkakamal ng salapi pero panandalian so kahit na maliit nating mga manggagawa sa gobyerno sa mga pribado sa kanya ay makilala na ang pagawa ng mabuti ay hindi magbubunga ng masama yun lang po
Marami salamat po honorable Lou Beloso honorable Carlos Caloy Castañeda is recognized
Ah marami salamat po your honor ah your honor maigsilamang po ang aking absob-absobasyon at iminumukahi ko po sa sa mga principal author na na kumare lamang po na bukod po sa monetary consideration o monetary rewards sana po kasabay na rin ang mabigyan natin sila ng plaque of recognition dahil gusto ko lamang pong paalala sa inyo lahat na ang pera po ay mauubos eh eventually mauubos ang pera pero kung meron po itong kasamang plaque of recognition kahit naubos na 'yung pera maalala pa rin ang mga daycare worker daycare teacher na deros at time na hindi sila pinabayaan ng city government ah kahili niya ko lamang po sa ating mga principal author na sana po ma- mahalagyan o masamahan ang plake ang lahat po ng makakatanggap ng reward na ito yun lang po your honor
Thank you ah honorable Carlos Caloy Castañeda very good suggestion I hope the principal authors will take that into consideration honorable Joel Chua
Thank you your honor your honor number one ah dun po sa kaninang binanggit ni Consel Lou Beloso ah humingi po kami ng paumanhin ni ah Conseller Princess Abante dahil nung naipasaputo eh hindi pa po tayo magkakasama pero we would like to manifest na ah sila po bilang bago po nating kasapi eh isasama po natin ang mga pangalan po ng lahat ng mga Consiala na nandirito hindi ko lang po alam kung si Consel Philip Lacuna ay gusto namamatanggal bilang bago minority tsaka si Consel J T B but ah kami namam po eh anyway number two po dun po sa concern ni Consel Caloy ah okay namam po yun kaya lang tingin ko mas proper 'yung pagka-end of service kaya kailangan we have to agree kung ano 'yung ilagay natin dito kasi pagbibigyan mo na ng plaque ibig sabihin nagtapos na eh kaya lang pa paano na kung hindi pa sila nagtapos sixty years na sila sixty years old sila tapos ah may ten years na sila tas gusto nilang iavail itong ah ah itong ano so hindi ko po alam kung saan
Ah honorable Joel Chua pwede namam po gumawa ng plake na ino honor po 'yung kanila na longevity ah long term service sa city of Manila not necessarily dahil sila po'y nag-iend na po 'yung kanilang service
Siguro maganda 'yan ilagay na natin sa I R R oh dito na ah pwede po dito
Honorable Philip Lacuna are you willing to yield to honorable Pamela Pugoso Pasqual?
No
Honorable Pamela Pugoso Pasqual is recognized
Maraming salamat po your honor alam niyo po napakaganda talaga ng ordinasang to hindi dahil kapatid ako ng M D S W H na si Direktora Repugoso kasi alam niyo po hindi pa po ako Consial isa na talaga sa gusto ko matulungan ay ating tong ating mga daycare teachers dahil sa totoo lang napakahirap magturo sa mga batang maliliit ang aga-aga nila pumapasok dun tinuturuan nila 'yung mga bata pag may mga sakuna sa distrito kahit hindi nila distrito nandun sila hindi sila natutulog lahat inaasikaso nila kaya napakaganda ho talaga na itong ordinasang to na sana eh maipasa talaga natin at saka regarding dun sa kung nine years and six months hindi pa siya nakaka ten years siguro namam pwede na natin pagbigyan baka namam kukuunti lang ang mga daycare teachers na hindi aabot ng ten years kasi for sure namam mahaba na 'yung mga termino ng mga existing 'yung mga existing na daycare teachers pero kung konting buwan lang siguro pwede na natin silang pagbigyan ah kasi katulad sa nine years and six months palagay ko pwede na po yun dahil almost ten years na rin po yun yun lang namam po eh sa akin lang maraming salamat po
Thank you honorable Pamela Pugoso Pasqual let's give the principal author honorable Princess Abante Marquia a chance to reply
Ah kung kami lang po ni majority leader ang masusunod gusto po namin talaga mabigyan pero we have to also understand the budgetary situation of the city in fact yun sa dalawang qualifications po 'yung fifteen ah sixty and above ah plus ten years tsaka 'yung fifteen years wala pa talaga kami numero kung ilan na magka-qualify and um knowing na this would be the first time this would be given baka marami mag-qualify ah it would be beyond um the budgetary ah capacity of the city to give dito so um ang lagi sinasabi ni mayor ang importante masimulan natin sa sa minimum muna na na requirement na pwede natin mabigay as we go along we would be able to expand and give more um kaysa 'yung yumakap tayo ng malaking malaking puno hindi pala natin mabibigay lahat so ako po ay nauunawaan ko po 'yung sentimento ni Consiala pa alam din po natin 'yung paghihirap ng mga daycare teachers pero we also need to balance the practicality of what the city can actually give pag tayo ay nag-implement as of now um during the last committee hearing we we needed to get the data of once we start to implement this how many will be able to to how many will be able to qualify to receive this baka maoverwhelm po 'yung budget um awahe namam po ako ni attorney Grace Chua so yun lang po
Thank you honorable Princess Abante Marquia honorable Philip Lacuna would you again would like to yield to honorable Johanna Morin Apolieto Rodriguez Honorable Johanna Morin Apolieto Rodriguez is recognized
Kaya maraming salamat po sa pagbibigay daan ni Consel Philip Lacuna ako lamang po ay bumabati sa ordinasang ito dahil alam ko 'yung ating mga kasamahan Consial dito ay isa tayo sa ano kumbaga ibinibiy- pinapahiwatig ng ating mga daycare teachers 'yung mga hinahing nila at nagkataon po talaga ng ating mayor 'yung ating vice mayor ay dumaan po sa pagiging Consial at alam nila 'yung hinahing ng ating mga daycare teachers at kaya nga po ay unti-unti binibigyan ng halaga 'yung ating mga daycare teachers pagdating na lang dun sa dagdag na sahod at eto nga 'yung bagong ordinancea na ibibigay natin para sa daycare at lalo nung nakaraan kung mapapansin niyo po sa ating mga F B sa ating Facebook na hindi lang dito binibigyan ng halaga kundi yung kung ano ba 'yung pangangailangan ng ating mga daycas doon sa loob ng kanilang silid aralan na kung saan nagbigay ang ating mahal na alkade na T V plus T V plus at kung mapapansin niyo 'yung ating mga estudyante ay nakakomplit uniform na P E at may libreng bag pa kaya sobrang maraming maraming salamat dun sa pagpapahalaga ng ating alkade ating vice mayor Hanila Kuna at syempre 'yung principal sponsor po ng ordinasang ito kaya maraming maraming salamat sa pagbibigay halaga po mo di po maraming salamat
Thank you honorable Apolieto Rodriguez paalala lamang po ang kapatid po ni Consiala Apolieto Rodriguez ang ating incumbent congressman from the third district of Manila Congressman Yul Ser Bonieto ay ah may ah inggranding handaan dito po sa ating lounge para sa kanyang ah in anticipation of his ah forty forty-fourth birthday on February two twenty-two twenty-twenty so pagkatapos po ng ating session lahat po tayo ay inaangyayaan ni Congressman Yul Ser Bonieto para kumain po sa lounge honorable Philip Salvador each lacuna is recognized
Maraming salamat po ginoong presiding officer finally maraming salamat at rin recognize yun na po ako hindi ko po alam kung bakit ah inuna niyo po ang atin po mga butihing Consiala hindi ko po alam kung dahil po ba ay sila po ay iyopong kadistrito hindi ko rin po alam kung dahil po ba sila ay babae ngunit sana namam po hindi po niyo sila pinauna dahil ako po ang minority floor leader sana po anyway dun namam po sa sinabi ng butihing Consel ah Conseller Joel Chua ah hindi ko lamang po gusto matanggal dito po ah pagiging ko principal author kumamarapatin nga sana kahilera niyo po ako dun sa taase anyway maraming maraming salamat po muli and ah maraming salamat it's an honor to be part of this landmark legislation ngunit I just have a question no ah dito po sa section two under definition it was very ah clearly defined ah what ano po 'yung kwalifikasyon na mga daycare teachers to avail of this ah ah of this reward no um and sa section A nakalaga 'yung qualified daycare teachers na at least mga nabanggit po na at least fifteen years or if they reach the age of sixty o 'yung pagiging senior citizen but hindi po dito malinaw 'yung definition po ng end of service ano po ba dapat ah makukuha lang po ba nila itong reward or incentive na ito pag kanila pag sila po ay tumigil na bilang ah daycare teachers or if they reach fifteen years or pwede na po ba nila itong iavail pero pwede pa rin po sila magturo so when you say end of service po kasi ibig sabihin po nun um nag-retire na po sila di po ba so yun lamang po 'yung question because I think we need to define 'yung end of service
Okay mister minority floor leader ang ganda ganda pa namam ng iyong ah pangunahing pananalita bago ka namin bigyang bugay subalit ah inaabesuhan ka po namin na napag-usapan na po 'yung kanina na talakay na po kaya po tayo nagrises hindi na po ito end of service reward ito po'y isang longevity pay reward so regardless kung ang daycare teacher ay ah ah magre-retire o hindi na po i-renew basta nag-qualify siya under the fifteen or ten year period entitled po siya dito sa longevity pay reward which will be amended during the period of amendments honorable so honorable Philip Lacuna is recognized
So pati po 'yung titolo po neto mapabalitan na po during the period of amendment
Yes, thank you minority floor leader honorable Salvador Philip Lacuna sino po una sa inyo tinuro niya ang kanya sarili honorable Edward Tan is recognized
Maraming salamat po sa kanakaduno una ko na lahat ako po rin tumakay yo ngutokota ditokota ordinalta at hiit na lahat alam natin pare-pareho na daycare teacher ay isang trabaho na mahirap dahil po ita'ko ay pakaalaga ng mga bata meron lam po ah agam-agam dahil po sila ko ay J O din tinuro tala na malaman natin na tibil service dahil maakatu sila na J O ikatut to ta'ku sila ng tibil service at hiit na lahat kinalanan din malaman nila ng K O ultilama ay qualified o hindi ko qualified kung mahalala natin noon panahon 'yung panahon na ginawa ni ordinalta ni Consial Manol Lakson na magkaroon ng benepisyo ang mga three term councilor yam po ay tinatalatil sa U C O ngunit lumayo hindi ko kinayagan ng K O at ng tibil service ayat napa tala nakalalatil ng alaman alamin natin po sa tibil service tayo po ay pwede pumatos dun na ilatabi na binigyan natin ng reward o malalang para ka para ka mga daycare teacher yun lang po ay agam-agam
Okay kumamarapatin po
Malaman natin lahat
Kumamarapatin po ng principal author gusto ko po sagutin ang katanungan ni honorable Edward Tan nabasa ko po 'yung decision po ng ah K O with respect to that proposed ordinance ah author by honorable ah Marlon Lakson city assessor ah kaya po ito na disallow sa totoo lang ito po wala pong pending case dito na disallow po ito ng K O dahil 'yung mga principal authors were ah beneficiaries of that ordinance since ah sila po ang nag ah pasa at ah sila rin po ang magiging beneficiary hindi po lahat some members of the city council would have been beneficiaries of that proposed ordinance di disallow po yun ang K O ay yun po 'yung dahilan ito namam po 'yung ating ah pinapasa pinapasa po ni honorable ah Abante Barkian honorable Joel Chua ang beneficiaries po dito ay hindi po Consial kung di po daycare teachers
tayo lam po ay para sigurado lam po tayo na pag ma bigyan natin ng mahalaga ang ating gawa ay para na mga teacher 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 yun lang po
Yes, marami salamat honorable Edward Tan honorable Dr. Luis C. Chua is Yes, maraming salamat, Honorable Edward Tan. Honorable Dr. Luisito Chua is recognized.
Hello? Thank you, Your Honor, for recognizing me. I would just like to congratulate the principal ah, author of this ah, ordinance. Ah, kasi nung during my, ano, as a consul, pad, marami akong naririnig eh. May kausap maraming kaibigan na daycare, madami silang hinahing sa kanilang mga trabaho. Kaya ako po natutuwa nung marinig ko to na, bibigyan natin sila ng ah, end pay retirement na, they are deserving, na deserve nila talaga. Kaya, kaya congratulate po 'yung mga principal author and would like to be, kung pwede na, mag-iisat din sa ko, principal author. At saka, kung sana in the future din, bukod sa magkaroon sila ng ano, ng dagdag na, I mean, retirement pay, sana dagdagantin natin kanilang swaldo, kung ah, ah, si they can afford it. 'Yun lamang po, marami po salamat.
Thank you, Honorable Dr. Luisito Chua. Honorable Darwin Awisiya is recognized.
Ah, maraming salamat po, Your Honor. Ah, ako po'y natutuwa sa ordinasang ito, sapagkat ah, unti-unti na pong natutupad 'yung mga dasal ng ating mga daycare teacher na mapansin po sila. Bukod sa, napansin na sila, naibibigay 'yung mga tamang ah, attention sa kina ng city. At ah, ako po'y ah, buong pusong sumusuporta po sa ordinancea ni Boss Princess, Boss Bata, mo ako ah, sama mo ako dyan. 'Yun lamang po, at nagkapakita ng suporta po sa ordinasang ito. Maraming salamat, Your Honor.
Thank you, Honorable Darwin Awisiya. Mister Majority Floor Leader?
Actually, gusto ko lamang pong linawin, hindi na nga po to retirement lumalabas eh. Ah, ako po, ang opinyon ko po, hehean po niyo na marami magbenepisyo kahit na hindi pa magre-retiro. Diba? Although, lalagay na lamang po natin na, they can only avail this ah, benefit once, diba? Pero hangga't malakas pa sila, gusto nilang, kasi may iba po dyan na, ah, hindi mo masasabi, 'yung iba biglang ah, kukunin ng kanilang mga anak, mag-a-abroad, diba? For good, pero antagal na rin na nagbigay ng serbisyo sa atin, eh, hindi pa namang sila due for retirement, diba? So sa akin, total, hindi namang po natin, total, ito pera namang po ito ng taong bayan eh. So hayaan natin na, mag-benepisyo, 'yung mga talagang nagsasakripisyo para sa taong bayan.
With that, Mister Majority Floor Leader?
With that, Your Honor, I move that we close the period of discussion and debate?
There is a motion to close the period of discussion and debate. There being objection, motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to open the period of amendment.
There is a motion to open the period of amendment. There being objection, motion is approved. Honorable Princess Abante Barquilla is recognized.
Um, maraming salamat po sa aking mga kasamahan konsial na nagbigay po ng kanilang mga opinyon at swestion, para po mas maging ah, maganda ang ordinasang na ito, na tumutugon sa magandang kanyang ah, purpose. So hinihiling ko po na, paki, na, kumamarapatin niyo po na magkaroon po kami ng mga amendments, para po ma, ah, mapaloob po lahat ng mga napag-usapan ngayong araw na ito. Unang-unang po, um, sa title ng ordinasa...
Unahin po natin ang body.
Ah, body mo na.
According to the rules, unahin po natin ang body.
So, um, the body, ah, section one, title of the ordinance. Um, this ordinance shall be known as, an ordinance providing monetary reward to qualified daycare teachers in the City of Manila appropriating funds thereof and for other purposes. Tinanggal na po namin 'yung end of service, hindi rin po namin siya pinalitan na longevity. Um, we, ah, we discussed ni Majority Leader na we will not make any quality more, para po, um, for, no, for, walang confusion or any misinterpretation. Um, section two, um, definition. Just in this ordinance, the following words, terms and phrases shall be defined as follows. Please delete, um, the phrase ah, on one, two, three, ah, fourth sentence, is not qualified to continue employment as daycare teachers. So as a whole, the, the section will be read as qualified daycare teachers. Daycare teachers that have rendered, um, that have, number one, rendered at least fifteen years of service as daycare teachers in the City of Manila, or number two, have reached sixty years old, and have provided that the daycare, ah, and provided that the daycare teacher has rendered at least ten years of service as daycare teacher in the City of Manila. Section three, beneficiary of this ordinance. All qualified daycare teachers as defined by this ordinance, provided that this monetary reward can only be availed of once. So we are...
One minute. Please declare the adjournment.
Please allow me to go back to section one. Um, the title of the ordinance, an ordinance providing monetary reward to qualified Manila daycare teachers under the Manila Department of Social Welfare in the City of Manila, appropriating funds thereof and for other purposes. Monetary reward. Monetary reward to qualified Manila daycare teachers under the, the Manila Department of Social... Ah, hey. Next, um, section two, qualified daycare teachers. Manila daycare teachers under the Manila Social Well Department, Manila Department of Social Welfare, that have, number one, rendered at least fifteen years of service as daycare teachers in the City of Manila, or number two, have reached sixty years old and provided that the daycare teacher has rendered at least ten...